Okay, I'd just like to call to order this special session, or this, I'm sorry, this work session of the Board of Education. I think there's a little echo. And are we calling rule? Laura, do you want to call the rule?
Garcia.
Here.
DePard.
Here.
Marcus.
Here.
Myers. Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Zess.
Here.
Okay, great. And so today's work session is about some of the work our community's been helping us with, security resource officers. But before we kick it off, I wanted to invite Rob to make a statement around the recent fires in our district.
Thank you, Board President Marcus, Board members. Before we begin this afternoon, I'd just like to take a brief moment to recognize the extraordinary situation that some of our families and staff are facing right now. Because of the two fires, a large number of people in BVSD are currently evacuated. And two of our elementary schools, Gold Hill Elementary and Jamestown Elementary, are closed this week. Our hearts go out to the families and employees who are waiting for word about the fires in their homes. Additionally, we want to thank the outstanding efforts of the firefighters and first responders who have been supporting our community during this crisis. Please know that at BVSD, we're doing everything we can to help those impacted. We're opening up classrooms and offering busing for those who need it, and we're as well as providing flexibility and support as needed. And I just wanted to start the meeting this evening to let those that are being impacted that our thoughts are with you this evening, and we're here to support and help in any way we can. So I appreciate the opportunity to make that statement to you.
Great, and I think I'm going to hand it right back over to you. Tonight, we have, we're going to hear about two sets of recommendations from the District Accountability Committee and also the somewhat newly-formed Equity Council that was led by Landon, who's joining us here at the Education Center. And also, we had a lot of community members participate, and they've been working on this issue as well. So, Rob, how do you want to?
Nope, that'd be great. I'll just, as a reminder to the board and to the public, in June, I proposed to this board to start a four-month process to review the situation around school resource officers. As part of that process, we did one of two things. One, we engaged CEI and Landon Mascarenas, who helped lead the development and the subsequent series of meetings on SROs of our newly-formed Equity Council. Want to thank Landon, CEI, and everybody who gave so much of their time to help us and support us in this effort. As a reminder, we had over 900 community members who wanted to take part in our Equity Council. We had to whittle that down to 40, which I know was a very tough, difficult task. So I really want to thank those that participated. In addition, Board engaged District Accountability Council Committee to also take another parallel look at the same situation. And so this evening, Board members, what you'll hear from, and I think Jorge, Ralph, Nicole, John, as long as it's okay with you all, we'll have District Accountability Committee go first, and then we'll follow that with the recommendations from Equity Council. And the intent of tonight is for the Board not to take action, but for the Board to hear the recommendations of both of these groups of citizens, the community members, that have been engaging on this topic.
And I just wanted to add that there is the option for Spanish subtitles tonight. So if you, I'm not sure if someone could put the link where you can get the Spanish subtitles in the chat room. That might make the most sense. Is that okay? Okay, great. All right.
And with that, I'm assuming Jorge, that you're going to be leading the presentation for District Accountability Committee. Is that correct? Or Ralph, do you want to do an introduction?
Yeah, I'll do a quick introduction. So, the customary process that the District Accountability Committee uses in doing analysis and making recommendations like this is to first form a subcommittee. So we did that, and Jorge Chavez, who is on the Executive Committee for the District Accountability Team, led that effort. And so we took a group of volunteers. Jorge partnered with other organizations within our community, got a sizable amount of information that they then digested. And what you're now going to hear from Jorge is the work of that subcommittee. So again, this is a traditional venue that we do at the District Accountability when we have an exercise of this complexity. So Jorge, and Nicole, if you'd like to add, please do so.
Thank you, Ralph, for the introduction. Is it possible for me to share my screen?
I would think so.
I think it's blocked right now. I think the host has to allow screen sharing.
Is that something we can do? Okay. Try again.
There we go. Thank you. As Ralph mentioned, thank you for the introductions. The kind of introduction, I appreciate being here and having the opportunity to speak to the work that was done by the subcommittee that focused on the School Resource Officer Program Review. Hold on one second, I'm having some difficulties with my... Okay. Yeah, I know that you all received the full recommendations prior to tonight's meeting. And so tonight, I've got to talk a little bit about the kind of the process that DAC undertook and the major issues that guided our discussions that ultimately resulted in drafting of the recommendations, just to provide the kind of context regarding kind of how we arrived at these recommendations. As Ralph mentioned, DAC recognized the need for inclusion of a greater range of perspectives and voices than that which is traditionally seen within the District Accountability Committee. So we conducted outreach to a number of Latino parents via help from Ari Gerson through the district, and specifically reaching out to the Latino Parent Advisory Council, CAPPLE, who participated in this process as equal partners with the District Accountability Committee. In addition, we have one DAC member, Jamila Richmond, who is a member of the newly-formed Parents of Color Council. So we have some good representation in this SRO kind of review subcommittee. And so I want to start, first of all, by saying thank you to the subcommittee members for their hard work in reviewing the SRO program and in developing the recommendations, because it really was a considerable amount of work that we did in a short period of time. We met for five, on five separate occasions, initially for an hour, then an hour and a half, and quickly became two-hour virtual meetings over the course of the last month and a half. We also continued to work asynchronously to review all the materials and, as we progressed, to draft the recommendations. And so thank you to the committee members for all of their work. A fairly sizable group that conducted this work. We reviewed a considerable amount of information and various materials and sources in arriving our recommendations. We started by looking at the original district presentation regarding the SRO program that was conducted with the school board and then with the District Accountability Committee. We reviewed the SRO literature review that was conducted by the school district. We were given a sample intergovernmental agency agreement that we reviewed. In addition, we submitted additional questions and requests for data from the school district that we want to review in our evaluation of the SRO program. And we submitted questions to the school district legal council as well. As it turned out, we were able to also get supplementary data that had previously been collected by CAPPLE, given some initial interest that they had in looking at some of the district-wide disproportionality and school discipline this last spring. So it became integral contribution on their part that we were able to access those data as well. And then we also looked at supplementary resources regarding other initiatives and endeavors on this topic at the local level and nationally, and other information that we could use to flesh out this review of SROs. And so today, I'll discuss kind of the major areas of focus that we concentrated on and that kind of guided our discussions prior to drafting the recommendations that we presented to you today. And because we are the District Accountability Committee at DAC, we started by focusing on accountability. And so we wanted to get a sense of the degree to which the SRO program is accountable, is evaluated, is what they do, what they gauge in, to the degree to which that's known in the district. And in our review of the materials, it became evidently, evident pretty quickly that there were no clear goals or oversight of the SRO program. We requested additional information from the school district regarding kind of the goals and the outcomes of interest for the SRO program, and we were unable to get any specific information. Rather, we got responses that were kind of very vague in general, and really talked about generalities such as, "SRO programs around the nation typically do this, SRO programs are designed to do that," but nothing specific about what we hope to achieve in Boulder Valley School District regarding the SRO program. We also realized that the district, to the best of our knowledge, the district has no system of oversight or accountability for the SROs operating in schools. There is no collection of data and no measurement beyond things like summonses or arrest information. Moreover, we are not aware of any policy, any board policy regarding the SRO program. And the only evaluation that we could see that was being conducted regarding the SRO program was being done by local law enforcement agencies that house the SROs themselves. There is potential for input from BVSD in those evaluations, but it's not clear or there's no evidence that this input is actually being provided. But even within the law enforcement evaluation, there's very little accountability. To the best of our knowledge, neither the district nor law enforcement collect data regarding student contacts or family contacts that are conducted by the SROs beyond summonses or arrests. The district collects no data from students or families regarding perceptions of the SRO program, and they conduct no outreach to racial, ethnic minority students or families who are likely to be disproportionately impacted by the SRO program, as evidenced by the data that the district presented to us. In addition, while we were given one sample intergovernmental agreement, there are currently no intergovernmental agreements or memorandums of understanding in place between Boulder Valley School District and any of the local law enforcement agencies which have SROs in the school district. And this was occurring prior to schools being shut down for the pandemic. Then we referred back to the presentation on SROs. One of the key contributions or the selling points that the SROs make regarding their impact on schools is the soft work that they do, the mentoring, the teaching, the outreach, relationship building that they say that they do. However, this is kind of historically very difficult to measure, and it is not being currently measured. And importantly, this is not the work on which they are actually being evaluated, and it's not clear that this is work which is explicitly trained or sufficiently trained. Which kind of got us to our next point, to do, we wanted to understand kind of what the SRO training was, what the job descriptions were, and kind of what the expectations were for the SROs. So here's where we inquired for additional information from the school district. And again, we asked for information regarding the SRO job descriptions and their training, and based on the district responses, we again got very kind of general information that was not specific to Boulder Valley School District. Again, the response we got were, "Most SROs receive this cup of training or should do these type of things. A typical job description looks like this." And in each case, regardless, the information we received was predominantly focused on law enforcement as a kind of primary orientation. And when we went to the city of Boulder website to look at information on SROs, the opening sentence says that "SROs are first and foremost law enforcement officers." So the overwhelming majority of training that SROs receive is law enforcement-focused. The job description is law enforcement-focused. And the services the school says that the SROs serve are also law enforcement-focused. And this makes sense, because the only evaluation that is conducted regarding SROs is done by the law enforcement agency. But importantly, to the best of our knowledge, SROs receive limited to no developmentally appropriate training for working with diverse youth populations, for addressing mental health needs, for mentoring youth. And it's clear it's not a primary focus of the orientation within the job descriptions. And this is important, because the focus, this focus is the meaningful work by which SROs say they're having an impact, mentoring, relationship building, counseling, outreach, those sorts of things. But it's not clear that they're actually being trained for this, and it's not clear that we're actually measuring this, and we're not actually evaluating officers on these criteria. And this is problematic, because much of what SROs say that they do doesn't appear to be very well-defined. It doesn't appear to be something they're trained for, and it's not being tracked or validated on the part of the school district or law enforcement agencies. We then turned to the issue of school safety, and this is typically a major rationale for having SROs on campuses, that they have an effect on school safety. However, based on the literature view that was conducted by the school district and our broader reading of the literature, there's limited research and actually very little evidence and no evidence that SROs actually have an impact on school safety. There's, there are no evaluations that show a overall benefit regarding safety from SROs. However, what we do see in the literature, again, within the literature review and our broader reading of the literature, is that the SROs do seem to have an effect on concerns about safety and concerns or fear about safety among students, in that these increase in the presence of SROs, in particular for students of color. Importantly, though, within the district itself, we do not collect any information regarding student perceptions, family perceptions, concerns, or fear in regards to SROs. In addition, regarding school safety, there's very limited information regarding how officers spend their times. But to the best of our knowledge, SROs spend a limited amount of time at any individual schools. SROs are responsible for covering multiple schools within the district. For all the local law enforcement agencies, SROs are responsible for every school within the agency's jurisdictional boundaries. In addition, SROs are pulled away for training, for court appearances, for vacations, other time off, for temporary reassignments. And we can only find evidence of only one officer actually being assigned to a specific school. And this occurred in the city of Boulder. However, as many of you know, the city of Boulder is cutting the SRO program from five officers to two officers, so even there, officers spend a limited time at any one particular school, and will do, and that will be even more so an issue as we move forward. And so what that means in terms of school safety is that calls for service are likely already happening, but we aren't actually tracking this information, so it's hard for us to gauge what this looks like. In addition, schools also have campus security officers to address many of the kind of the safety, basic protection needs that are going on at schools, in particular because most of the referrals and calls for service involving juveniles are for relatively minor offenses and conduct problems. And we'll talk more about those in a little bit. And these campus security officers serve many of the same security functions and soft relational functions as SROs. They respond to minor crimes or thefts, respond to emergencies and participate in emergency preparedness activities, they maintain visibility on school grounds, they monitor physical security, and are in charge with encouraging a productive kind of learning environment. So there is overlap in terms of how those basic sorts of security responsibilities that we see within the SRO program. But importantly, with regards to school safety, there's no evidence, you know, based on the literature, on the prior literature or at BVSD, that SROs actually impact school safety. However, we do recognize, and we do have evidence, you know, based on prior literature and research, that they do have a negative effect on feelings of safety and increases for fear in the presence of SROs. Which goes back to evaluation and impact. As I noted before, evaluation of SROs is primarily conducted by host law enforcement agency with potential for input from BVSD, however, this doesn't appear to be happening. There's very limited data being collected on SRO interactions or behaviors, or, sorry, there is no data being collected on SRO interactions or behaviors, with the exception of information on number of summonses and arrests. The SRO selling points they do is soft work, but this is very difficult to measure, and it's not currently being measured. Moreover, it's not clear this is something that SROs are being evaluated on, and it's not clear this is work which they're trained or sufficiently trained. There's limited evidence of the effect of SROs on school safety, however, we do know that they have a negative effect on concerns and fear about safety in students. And moreover, we know that the primary, the majority of calls for which SROs are receiving referrals are for minor offenses involving things like alcohol, substance use, vaping, smoking, behavioral issues, which SROs are not really trained to deal with. And importantly, they are creating an entry into the juvenile justice system, and we know about the negative impacts of the juvenile justice system. We know that suspensions and law enforcement referrals maintain and widen the achievement gap, and increase risk for dropping out, and increase risk for adult juvenile justice contact. So there appears to be limited evidence regarding the positive effects of SROs, and there's very little actual evaluation being done, and we have seen considerable evidence regarding the negative effects of SROs in the schools. We then transitioned to discuss racial, ethnic disparities in school discipline and referrals. And this is a critical point, since based on the SRO presentations, they noted that the disparities that we see in SRO data are actually a continuation of disparities that are already present in the school discipline data. And so I'll address that in a second. In order to get this issue, we requested detailed and segregated data from the school district, but unfortunately, they were not made available to us for a number of reasons, including things like privacy concerns, FERB regulations, and really just more general issues regarding a lack of data collection over prior years that are just now being addressed, and concerns that there was considerable inconsistency and lack of data being collected across all the schools in the district. And this is where CAPPLE was critical in terms of having access to school data from previous years that they were able to get via Colorado Records Act request last spring. And drawing on these data, we see that the disproportionality we saw in the SRO data are in fact occurring earlier in the process at the instructor, administrator, and school level. Where we see Black and Latinx students are three to four times more likely to be suspended for behavioral incidents, more likely to be disciplined for subjective infractions, and more likely to be disciplined more harshly than white students for the same behavior. For example, looking at school suspensions, about 50% of incidents involving white youth result in a school suspension. We compare this to 48%, or almost half of incidents involving Latinx youth resulting in a school suspension. So why the disproportionality here in the way in which school suspension is being used by race and ethnicity? As noted in the SRO, in the district SRO presentation, nearly three-quarters of calls or referrals to SROs are initiated by staff. And the summons and arrest data show that the disproportionality is present in the discipline data continuing the summons and arrest data, with youth of color being overrepresented in the data. The SRO program reported over a three-year period across all five jurisdictions, there were approximately 500 summonses and 45 arrests over that three-year period across all schools in the district. And we see Latinx students represent about a third of these arrests and summonses, and Black students represent more than 5% of arrests and summonses, well overrepresented based on their numbers in the school district. And we know that there are more dire consequences given summonses and arrests, given entry to the juvenile justice system, in particular for students of color. Above and beyond the disparities and the disappearing consequences, we also see disparities in the types of offenses or incidents for which students are being disciplined. Looking at suspension data, we know that racial, ethnic minority youth are being suspended for more subjective offenses like disrespect, non-compliance, whereas white students are being disciplined for more objective, things like rule-breaking, like vaping, alcohol consumption, substance use, or hurtful physical behavior. And so after reviewing the data, we could not separate the systemic institutional issues that are present in our disciplinary practices early on in the process from the SRO program, given the ways in which racial, ethnic minority youth are following the criminal behavior. So we need to kind of address these issues in tandem. And importantly, this create, these numbers kind of create a context for understanding student mental health needs and supports that we were also focused on. As noted in the district SRO presentation, the overwhelming majority of summonses and arrests are for minor offenses, primarily for things like alcohol, marijuana use, conduct issues, those sort of things. There were 500 summonses and 45 arrests over a three-year period across all jurisdictions and BVSD, across all of BVSD. Looking at data from 2019, 2020 alone that we were able to get from the school district, there were 82 youth who were reporting traumatic incidents in their background that they're actively coping with during the 2019, 2020 school year. There were more than 300 mental health support referrals in that one school year alone, and there were nearly 550 suicide risk assessments in that single school year as well. So this highlights the critical need for mental health and socio-emotional, relational support for youth in our school district. And so for us, this suggests that we need comprehensive strategies which target social isolation, student engagement, community building, and increased supports from culturally-competent, trauma-informed health professionals. So the key here being that we're addressing this need with proactive strategies that are addressed with causes rather than reactive interventions once students are at a crisis point, which is when SROs typically enter this equation. So based on our view of this literature, the SRO approach to their job, based on their training, their description, their evaluation is primarily from a law enforcement perspective and is reactive in nature, while the majority of issues driving SRO contacts are related to substance use, mental health issues, conduct problems, that need to be addressed proactively with culturally-competent, trauma-informed health professionals, and with comprehensive changes regarding how we discipline youth in our school district. And so this then set up our recommendations that we submitted to you today. And so I just want to say thank you to the subcommittee members and all the people who have helped us develop and drafting these recommendations.
Thank you so much. That, we always appreciate the time and effort that the District Accountability Committee puts in its work, and as usual, you did a great job in helping us further understand some of the issues surrounding school resource officers. Rob, do you want to listen to this presentation and then the next one? Do questions here and then move on to the next one, or both at the same time? What are you thinking?
I think probably if we move forward and hear from the Equity Council, and then if we can keep the folks from District Accountability Committee on the line if there's any other questions, but at the pleasure of the Board, whatever you all feel like would be best.
DAC, is that okay with you, to just hang on while we go through the other? I think some of the questions might cross over, so it might make sense. All right.
Yeah, absolutely, and we'd like to certainly hear theirs.
Okay. Who's presenting on the Equity Council side?
So I guess that'd be me.
All right. Mike.
President Marcus, members of the Board. Dr. Anderson, thank you for the opportunity for us to come to you with some, I would call it a recommendation with six sections that the Equity Council has come up with. And as Dr. Anderson said, back in June, four months in process, this committee has worked very hard every Wednesday night in coming up with, speaking and listening to a lot of data sources that we had within the meetings that we had. And a big compliment to CEI. I think the whole notion around the facilitation went really well, but what's so challenging is when you have to facilitate in a virtual environment, that has been one of the most challenging things that I've ever faced, and I've learned a lot from that, so a compliment to them for doing that. The committee, 40 members, is made up of committee members, organizations, teachers, principals, students, and we can go into a little more about that, but what I'm going to do now is turn it over to Landon Mascarenas, who works for CEI, the College Education Initiative, and give us the recommendation. Landon?
Thank you, Mike, and President Marcus, Marcus, members of the Board. First off, I just want to send my thoughts and intentions out to all the Boulder Valley students and families impacted by these fires. It's a very significant summer and fall for us all, and just my thoughts are with your community right now, and to the Board and Superintendent. First, immense gratitude to all of you, the Superintendent Anderson, and to the Equity Council and the broader community. You know, our purpose and goal for the Equity Council as the initial charge was to jump-start a long-term committee that would be focused on dealing with the equity questions and challenges at present within the Boulder Valley School District. And our first question was really to take on this wondering and essential question around, what should the relationship be between Boulder Valley School District and school resource officers, and therefore the police departments in the surrounding area? And I want to just say that taking on an issue like this that is complex, it's nuanced, there's a lot of different dimensions to it, I just want to applaud Boulder Valley for asking both, two committees, to take on this issue, because we have, we've seen a lot of school districts around the country take on this issue in very quick ways, in ways that don't always bring together the full community. And I just want to applaud you all for taking the time and energy to ask multiple committees to take this on, and using the opportunity to reinforce and develop a broader consideration around how do you increase your system as an equity-seeking organization for families and communities? So my goal tonight in the presentation is three-fold. One, to share the overall arc of our work, who we talked to, our process, and then the recommendations. And it's a really important thing, as we built out the Equity Council, that we thought through the types of stakeholders and folks that we had to open up and listen to, and then bring the information in into thinking differently about how we processed it. So our goal for you all tonight is to hear a strong, clear signal from the Equity Council based on both their lived and shared experience being on the committee, to actually build a consensus-driven approach to what's possible around this important... a consensus-driven approach to what's possible around this important question. So do we have the deck, or should I share from my computer? Okay, there we go. There we go. Okay. So as I've shared with this board and BVSD leadership over the course of the year since we've been getting started, there's a significant amount of meetings we've had every single week over the course of the last six weeks, hearing from a significant amount of stakeholders, both internally and externally throughout the Boulder Valley community. And a component of that was to build an understanding through the Equity Council of the nature of the partnerships, the nature of the internal conversations, and hear from the most impacted stakeholders in the Boulder Valley community. And here we are, here with you tonight, kind of working on those recommendations in particular. As a reminder, we launched on September 16th, and we took on this question to really co-create and co-produce with families and communities. And to my point earlier, we really had to remind the Equity Council, and I think this was an important thing, is that we really want to get to a place where we're sending a clear North Star signal for the superintendent and the board, because we know that you all have a lot to debate and to weigh, and the staff has a lot to think through in terms of implementation questions, but we want the recommendation and push from the Equity Council to help clarify what the community is thinking about and how a broader conversation could unfold based on what they've learned and their own personal experience. So one of the things we want to also share is just a little bit about how we've thought about approaching some of the stakeholder engagement. So we started a lot with folks who are most external from the Boulder Valley school system. We got a chance to engage the district attorney, police departments, we heard from the public defender, the coin-appointed special advocate, we heard from student support services, and then we also spent some time hearing from students and families and teachers throughout, who have been involved in this experience. And then, as we'll go through the recommendations here in a second, you'll see that many of our recommendations map against this set of system analysis. So you know, when we think about the complex and interconnected web of an issue like a school resource officer, how do we think about taking on some of these questions? And so one of the things that I think is really important in my experience in building Equity Councils is that we really actually think differently about the way that we not only bring community members onto them, but how we ask them to participate. So if radical inclusion is the goal, then we have to have a different type of participation, and we have to have a different type of discussion. So as we approached the building of the recommendations, we did not put forward, you know, a set of things that we thought they might agree on, and then got 50-plus one-on. We started extremely generatively with the whole council participating and putting forward proposals through a consensus-making approach. And the idea there was to arrive at a place where the group would arrive at a consensus around the proposal that they themselves built out. So we did something called a fist of five, which means, you know, five means you really agree, fist is you block, and one means, you know, I hate it, but I won't block it. And then what we do is we listen to the lowest rankings, and then incorporate the feedback from those lowest-ranking positions, and then we share our feelings on the question, we make proposals, we build consensus. And I share this process because while it might seem like minute detail, I do think it's a different approach than typically is experienced on committees. And I think it shares that the fact that we were able to achieve 85 to 90%, and in this case, 90% agreement on these recommendations, has a very strong signal on these recommendations from this committee. And in fact, I would say that we only had one or two blocks the entire time, and the threshold was 90%. Here's a sample of some of the initial recommendations that came out from the first group of SRO, from the first conversation we had, which was, again, people would share and put an idea out there, then other people would add on to it and amend, and then we'd have consensus. And over the course of three meetings, we had a variety of recommendations, but began to coalesce on a set of things that became very clear that the Equity Council had consensus around. And these are the six prongs that Mike talked about earlier. Recommendation number one was to end the current SRO partnership and remove SROs from all school buildings. This was the foundational recommendation because it most directly dealt with the essential question asked by the board and the superintendent. And while we had two different groups that emerged last week that were taking on different questions around redesigning the SRO role, eliminating the SRO entirely, there was consensus that as the SRO program is currently structured, there was consensus in the group to end that current program. Recommendation two followed around what the safety considerations should be moving forward, that BVSD should internally manage non-emergency issues and mental health concerns internally within themselves as a system, and that this excludes external safety concerns that include the threat of death or seriously bodily harm, and that any future safety staff should be a BVSD employee with a trauma-informed approach. As we heard a variety of stakeholders and experts in the community, whether it was the public defender, or parents and families, that idea of a trauma-informed approach around additional safety considerations was really something that gained a lot of traction and consensus on the committee. The third recommendation that came loud and clear in all the groups that became, it really emerged, was that student voices need to be elevated in the design and oversight of ongoing school safety issues. One of the things that became really clear, and I think the DAC spoke to this a little bit, is the limited type of engagement from students in the current program, and that the voices of students, in particular, black, indigenous, people of color, and students from a variety of the LGBTQIA perspectives, should be elevated and incorporated as students who are most impacted by the disproportionality of this policy. And the Equity Council believed that by listening to this group in particular, we are more likely to have a stronger design in any future issues. Recommendation four dealt directly with the type of support that district staff members should receive. There was consensus that emerged in all the groups, and that we coalesced on last night as we were moving forward, that all BVSD staff should receive bias and anti-racist training, that BVSD should expand mental health and trauma-informed staff at schools, and an issue that came up most importantly, especially as we received a lot of the data and had a discussion around the kind of impacts that flowed out from the SRO program, was that we really believed, the group came to the consensus, that they should regularly review the discipline data. School staff should review this data with senior BVSD leaders, so there are deep and regular conversations about discipline data. Recommendation five, one thing that we heard from a few different stakeholders was that there needed to be consideration about the future relationship with police departments. Because even though some folks on the committee might want to end the relationship, that there actually always will be, in the case of safety needs and security needs, some sort of connection with the police department. And so therefore, the Equity Council recommended that as BVSD takes on any questions around future relationships with the various police departments, knowing that you all have to deal with a lot of different departments in your jurisdiction, that a diverse task force should be put together of administrators, teachers, students, and community members, farthest from opportunity, in particular, black voices, given the disproportionality, should work to design an MOU that clearly defines any of the new relationships between BVSD and local police departments. And then finally, recommendation six, there were a variety of other issues that came up in the course of the Equity Council's conversation. A variety of systemic issues related to systemic racism, classism, disproportionality around language, and the way that students and families engage with security officers through that lens, that people believe that there are a set of larger issues that are taking place, and that the Equity Council and BVSD leadership and the broader community should always make sure that the voices of those particularly impacted by these policies should be at the table, helping to provide additional recommendations to the board, and additional recommendations to the superintendent around these issues. With that, I can stand for questions.
Great, thank you so much, and thanks again to the Equity Council for all their time and engagement. Okay, so first, we'll start with questions, and we do not have any board members online, so this will be a little bit easier today, right? It's just us? Okay. So who wants to start? So I'll start with a question, and this is for both the DAC, and I don't even know where to look here, because I have one person here and one person there. This is for both the DAC and the Equity Council. Did you, did either group talk about guns? The only people allowed to use guns currently in the Boulder Valley School District are police officers. We don't have a policy that supports the arming of any BVSD employees. So just wondering if you touched on that and what that looked like.
Speaking on behalf of the DAC SRO review subcommittee, the only issue that we discussed regarding the issue of guns was the kind of chilling effect that, you know, law enforcement has with, when a gun is on campus, right? That any interaction between a juvenile and a law enforcement officer is going to be shaped by the presence of guns, the potential for lethal force, and for things to kind of change. And I think this was part of the driving force behind why, you know, students report increased fear in terms of dealing with law, seeing law enforcement on campus, that this is a very visual reminder of the potential risk for harm that may arise, even though the reality is that while extremely tragic actual risk is very low and very rare.
Okay. Landon?
Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but I guess I would echo Jorge's component. That's how it came up in the context of the Equity Council as well, and there wasn't a further conversation after that point.
Okay.
And I recall from Jorge's presentation previously, that most schools don't have an SRO present at all times, so most schools are relying on 911 calls if there's a need for an armed individual at the school presently in our current system, and so that would just continue into the future.
Okay, thank you so much, because it has, a couple people asked me about that, so I was curious. All right, and I was curious, in the, in either council, how many teachers participated in the councils specifically, Mike?
I recall, I think we had four.
Okay. And were there some from the secondary level? Okay. Do you have teachers on the DAC? I think you have a couple right now, right?
We do.
We have a couple teachers on the DAC, but the members in the subcommittee that were serving in that capacity would be one.
Okay. Awesome. All right, thank you so much. What other questions? I'm just trying to keep, get us going here. Any other questions?
So I think there might be a common thread between the first recommendation between the two of you, but I just want to make sure I understand it. The recommendation is to end the SROs the way it's currently structured. That doesn't foreclose a restructuring and a revamping of some use of SROs. Is that a fair statement of both of your committees' presentations?
I can't speak to the DAC's recommendation, but I do believe that it was very clear that that's where we were able to build consensus around in the Equity Council.
Jorge?
Yeah, thank you for that question. I think that's a really important question to address. From the perspective of the DAC, the DAC recommends that the district and the SRO, I guess the SRO program, remove SROs from the school district. And the focus should then be reoriented towards, on expanding the use of culturally competent, trauma-informed, mental health professionals, and engaging in proactive strategies rather than reactive strategies. So, you know, this was approved unanimously by the DAC, but the focus here is not in changing the nature of SROs, but rather changing our focus in terms of where we address the problem. I think the SRO program is a reactive strategy, in the sense that when a child is referred to SRO, the child, the juvenile is at a point of crisis, and it's after a long chain of events that have led to that particular referral or interaction. Whereas mental health professionals, climate change, addressing social isolation are proactive strategies that get at the root causes of the problem, and that's where we thought that our recommendations are coming from, that we need to address those sorts of approaches rather than just change the reactive strategy which doesn't address the initial problem to begin with.
So Jorge, there is a...
They will ask it.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Nicole.
Sorry, Kathy. I'll just add that, you know, the DAC recognizes that we have to have school safety plans, we have to have safety plans across the district, and that law enforcement needs to be involved at some capacity in those safety plans, and so our recommendation, in addition to that, was to really make sure we're devising safety plans that have broad degree of community involvement, and that could involve, that would involve...
Law enforcement?
Law enforcement in some capacity. We're just not clear what that might look like, because the process would need to be carried out.
And that's distinct from the SRO program.
The reason I ask Jorge is the recommendation says ends the existing SRO program, so I thought that was more in line with what the Equity Council was saying, but it sounds like maybe not. Did you guys look at what kinds of, this is to the DAC, you referred to how it was looking in the rearview mirror, paraphrasing. Did you look at other job responsibilities that SROs had aside from just referring?
We did request information from the school district regarding the kind of responsibilities of SROs, the type of engagement they do. They do do some educational activities, so doing things like trainings on substance use and things of that nature, but those are kind of small workshop-type of things. They are engaged with the school safety plan, so those sorts of things. Is that kind of what you were referring to?
Yeah, their entire job isn't just referral, so I was just making sure you understood that there are other job responsibilities besides the referral piece of SROs.
Oh yes, thank you. No, absolutely, and I think that's a really important component, right? That, you know, a lot of what they do is this sort of soft-skill work. They say that they're doing mentoring, training, outreach, relationship building, however, it's not something that we're actually measuring or looking at. We don't actually train SROs for that sort of work, and there's currently no way of assessing that sort of work in the SRO program. So I think that's a critical component.
If they tell you that they're doing that, do you have any reason to not believe them?
It's not a question of not believing them, it's a question of asking whether they're properly trained for that, whether that is the best ways in which to approach that sort of work, and whether that work can actually be done, and done well within the context of the course of force of law enforcement.
And I would add that in our, you know, as we're striving as a district for increased transparency and accountability, this is just one of the areas in which there is, it's not clear to us that there is a high degree of transparency and accountability, and that's something we're advocating for. And so it's not about trusting what they're doing or not doing, it's just, like every other thing we look at as a DAC, we're looking for measures around accountability and transparency, and that's where that falls.
And answering to that question, I would also add the following. In listening to the job description that an SRO provides to a school, so we had an SRO officer address the group, it was clear that there was value-added, as Jorge put it, soft-skill work that was going on. What was interesting to us is that a number of those instances, it was value-added work that we thought was really important, and it was interesting to find that it fell outside the formal training, outside the measurement, and outside of anything that we would have for accountability or transparency. So I think it's suffice to say that there are good things that are going on that we don't necessarily know as much about, that we would like to know more about.
So that was my next question, is what kind of transparency and accountability would you want to see? Did you have a discussion about that? I get that the training and some of that, you could pretty well document, so I'm just curious what other kinds of transparency and accountability, because that's, as you say, Nicole, that's really important for the DAC, and it's important for the district. So I guess that was a question, were there other areas that you would see for accountability and transparency that could be measured?
So, you know, I can't speak for the DAC, but I will reckon, turn you to a multiple set of kind of our recommendations, which is around students being present at the design of potentially some of those mechanisms, including community members and groups. And I think that's really fundamental to the Equity Council's set of recommendations, that there's an opportunity to co-create and co-produce a new set of measures and structures around the relationship between police departments and the district, and that those most disproportionately affected should be the ones to decide and build out those.
Yeah, Landon, that was one of my questions, is what would that look like, do you think? Is that yet to be determined?
I think that's yet to be determined, but I think what the Equity Council does is lay out some of the conditions for how that could happen, what sort of voices would it look like, and I think we believe the Equity Council, if it moves forward and continues to be built out and structured to represent some of those voices, could be a way to support the district in answering some of those questions.
So would that include expanding the equity, or would that be presentations, or both, some combination?
You know, we heard some great feedback from the group last night about how... You know, we heard some great feedback from the group last night about how there's a strong diversity on the Equity Council, but we could go farther, particularly in terms of more student voices, more educator voices. And I think there was a lot of interest and energy in that, and I think that aligns with some of the recommendations we see here, is that as the district takes on some of these questions going forward, there's an opportunity to do that.
And I think there's an understanding, at least, correct me if I'm wrong from both groups, that there is an acknowledgement that we'll still need to engage with the police, unfortunately, in some circumstances. Did you have any conversations about what that would look like?
Yeah, and in particular, I would point you to recommendation five in the Equity Council recommendation, which essentially says this, which is that we know that there will be a future relationship with these police departments, and that as BVSD takes that on, that there should be an opportunity to rethink and renegotiate that relationship, to set clear expectations and structures around how those folks engage with BVSD schools and staff.
Yeah, that was my question on recommendation five, is it says, "An MOU that clearly defines any relationship between BVSD and local police departments." So I was just curious what you meant by "any relationship."
I think that folks understood that there's actually a kind of a variety of dynamics that occur between police departments and school districts, and that there was an opportunity to kind of more fully flesh that out and think through that. And so, you know, we were saying, "We don't want to get too specific here, because we want to just more thoughtfully create an opening for a conversation."
Did either group have discussions around using security officers and what their role would be, and what training they should go through?
In recommendation two from the Equity Council, that's a very specific component of that recommendation. And I think that there's an acknowledgement that there's mental health issues, there's safety issues that comes up that are non-emergency issues in a school, and that the Equity Council came to consensus that these, any future safety staff should be BVSD employees with that trauma-informed approach. And I think that was a really important component. I don't want to take the DAC's language and put it into ours, but I think there was a recognition that this requires a different sort of training and a different sort of approach than what we're currently offering.
Sort of what you were just talking about is the transparency and accountability is the training that would be supplied to anybody who's engaged with safety and security.
That's right. And then again, recommendation three is really saying that students should have a role in thinking about what that looks like, and how incredible would it be to have the students who've been most disproportionately affected by the previous policy help think through and design the future of that next policy.
So bullet number two, Landon, external safety concerns and threat of death or serious bodily harm, you would see those as potentially still within the parameters of the police, if I'm reading that correctly?
That's correct. We had a presentation from a local professor who's a criminal justice expert that said very clearly that that was something that had to be considered, and that we know that there will be moments like this that have to be thought through and negotiated, which I think leads us to the recommendation we talked about a moment ago around the MOU.
Yeah, this is something the DAC did discuss as part of their recommendations. And while our first primary recommendation is to remove and end the SRO program, that doesn't preclude continuing work, as Nicole mentioned, to develop safety plans and work with local law enforcement. And of course, there will be instances where calls for service will still happen. So we do recognize that that continues to...
I think one of the places where I get a little confused is recommendation four seems to be independent of any SRO conversation. Is that a fair statement?
In recommendation four from the Equity Council, this really came from conversations from the principals, the educators, the community members, and a variety of folks on the committee who recognized that actually a lot of the safety and concern issues begin in classrooms, and begin kind of in the variety of the hallways of schools. And that actually a critical component to taking care of the disproportionality that we see in school discipline is thinking broadly about the biases and tendencies of our educators, so that there's a huge opportunity here to engage in a broader training and prevention protocol work, particularly around anti-racist work. And if, you know, folks are also trained around mental health and trauma-informed staff, and review discipline data, that creates both a support and accountability mechanism for not just security staff to own that exclusively at schools, but to be a part of a broader ecosystem.
And that has echoed a lot of what was in their recommendation four, has echoed in our second and third recommendations on really having training and more accountability, including the metrics, the new discipline matrix the district put together. So a lot of those are echoed similarly in our message as well, which I think is a positive, that there's pretty consistent alignment between the two sets of recommendations.
And I think the district has taken that very seriously, and thanks to the good work of staff, we've revamped our discipline policies, and it's still pretty new to see what the impact is going to be. Did you take any look at what our current discipline policies are, and is that TBD in the future?
That's, I think, a future conversation. There were some questions the DAC asked that we were able to provide also some information back to our group, but that wasn't a subject of a deeper conversation.
And the DAC did look at participating in the discipline policy, sort of update when that went through over the summer, so we were able to kind of tap into some of that information. Kind of created more awareness for our group as well around that. And overwhelmingly, the subcommittee in the DAC recognized that all of that is, the policy changes are great, and the discipline matrix is well-needed, but we need to see where the numbers start to roll in, and then continue to adjust practice with all of the information that we're getting, and be really transparent around what we're doing, how the staff is being trained, and how discipline, when we're back in schools, or, you know, how discipline is handled right now, how we're measuring that and just sharing that data out.
And that help from DAC over the summer was hugely appreciated, and the input, I just think it's too soon to tell, but as you say, Nicole, we'll be gathering that data and making sure that if there's adjustments that need to be made, that we'll be making those along the way in our discipline policies. Anybody else? I have a few more, but I'm looking through my questions.
I wanted to follow up on the campus safety officer conversations from both groups. I'm still not clear what a requirement is to become a campus safety officer, and I'm wondering if that came up at all. It sounds to me that... Thank you. It sounds to me that maybe not the letter of the recommendations, but the spirit of the recommendations, a lot of the work would fall to those campus security officers. So I'm concerned about what the requirements are to become one, because I still haven't figured that out, and it doesn't seem to be very in line with what would be expected of them. And I know we've talked about training, but we already have campus safety officers that don't have that training and maybe don't have requirements that are in line. So I'd like to hear about that from both groups.
That's something that we, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
That's actually a question that we addressed to the school district to try to get some more information regarding the training and expectations of the campus safety officers. And it appears that they do receive some sort of minimal training, but it wasn't clear what the requirements were for getting a campus safety officer position.
I would add, I thought Rob Price could actually answer that question in terms of what their requirements are. However, this actually begs to say the opportunity now could really be powerful based on that last recommendation around the MOU for officers, but also maybe a new description for our campus officers as well.
Were these campus safety officers, I think I saw them listed on the Equity Council list of people that you talked to. I don't know if DAC talked to any of them. I'm wondering what they had to contribute with regard to going forward and their role.
We did not actually directly speak to an SRO on the Equity Council. We heard from two different police chiefs, and we shared the presentation from...
Sorry, not the SROs, the campus security officers.
Oh, campus security officers, no.
And we actually did not talk to campus security at that point, no. We did have Brendan Sullivan come in and talk to us, along with Rob Price, around the requirements for campus officer, but...
Thanks. Just two for now. I wanted to maybe ask a follow-up question on that first exchange between Kathy and Landon, and make sure I understood it. It seems like in the recommendation that you showed us, Landon, that removing SROs from all school buildings is a clear part of the recommendation. And then, if I remember correctly, I think the conversation around relationship was the idea that moving forward, knowing we have police officers who will continue to interact with our schools, what can we do to make sure that we have relationships with those police officers, so that when they show up, people already know each other, they're, you know, it doesn't need to be a starting from scratch? But I don't think there was a conversation about whether or not an SRO program would continue, only about what the relationship with police officers would look like.
Yeah, that's correct, and that's an important clarification. I apologize if there was any blurriness there. One thing I just would name on that is that I think that there was a real clear understanding that the current program, that's where we achieved consensus, would end, and the current SROs would be removed from school buildings.
Thank you. And then Jorge, forgive me if you already addressed this, but after the subcommittee did all of this enormous amount of work, you brought your recommendation to the full DAC, and there was a vote from the full DAC board, correct?
Yes, that's correct. And the recommendations were approved in full by the full board unanimously.
Perfect, thank you.
Richard, did you have anything? No? Okay. Any other...
Just hold on, just a sec, sorry.
What?
No, I just want to thank both the DAC and the Equity Council for the hard work that they did. As you know, I was on the, as an observer at every one of the Equity Council meetings, except for one, and I just observed the process and the interactions that were going on between Equity Council members and the facilitator. And for me, it was a really good process that they used to get all the information out. I was there when they brought in the professor from, I think it was UNC, to talk a little bit more about the role of SROs and the police departments, et cetera. So I am pleased to see what the recommendations came about. I do have one question that was kind of bothering me a little bit when DAC made a presentation. And this is a question, I guess, for the superintendent. My question is, why did CAPOL have to do a CORA request for the information that you were seeking? I'm not, I don't understand why they had to do that, because it seems to me like CAPOL is a district advisory group, and to do a CORA request, I'm not sure why they had to do that.
Thanks, Richard, great question. I would say that there were some hiccups in getting the depth and complexity of data that CAPOL was looking for. Some of these reports weren't readily available. We had to make sure that staff dug in through some of our antiquated systems. As Kathy alluded to earlier, these are systems in regards to discipline, a common discipline matrix and common discipline reporting that we've moved to fix in moving forward. But just as a reminder to this board and the public, prior to the discipline code and policy that this board passed in the spring, and the discipline matrix where we started to align the types of consequences for incidents that happened across schools, that many schools were doing this on their own, and many of them were doing them off of the system. And that's because that's the district condition that we created, right? That is not a slight on any school, that is how business had operated in this district for quite some time. So as we think about disproportionate discipline, as we think about transparency, accuracy in reporting, and being able to readily do that, you have to have everybody on a similar system, operating from the same sheet of music. That gives you clear appeals processes if folks feel like they've been treated unfairly. That creates, it empowers the chain of command to react and respond, and it allows us to have clear data. So the data that we provided to CAPOL, to DAC, to anybody who asked for it, it was our intent to provide folks all of the data, the best data that we had available. I cannot promise you that was 100% accurate, right? But getting and digging into those systems, if you don't understand that that's the way it was, and that we actually had to chase down a bunch of this data, I think that, and we've worked with the Latino Parent Advisory Council in talking about this, there was, I think, some misunderstanding on why was it taking so long? Why can't you just give us the data? The reality is that we had a district condition that didn't allow us to access and share that data. Moving forward, we will. We're proud of the work that we did last year, but it did take us an entire year, along with Kathleen's Help Student Support Services, to come to those agreements. But that's kind of the long story. I know that was a short question, but sorry about the depth.
Thanks, Rob. I guess, just a follow-up, did you provide more information than the RFI that I requested on school discipline suspensions and expulsions?
I'd have to review. I'd have to review what was provided within the asks. I think there were different asks. They had like maybe 20-some questions, right? And so that's, I think, they took a little bit of time for us to get that information. But we did eventually get them the best information that we had.
Thank you.
And I was wondering if either group, so, I mean, you mentioned the Safe Schools Act, and I do have a general question for staff. I was reading over the Colorado Safe Schools Act, which we have to comply with, and it seems like there's a portion of the act that the school board is supposed to be aware of our school safety plan for each school. Are we, how are we complying with that?
Your school safety plans?
Yeah.
Just trying to get my video on here, Tina, sorry.
Oh, okay.
All of our school safety plans, we have a broad safety plan for the entire district, and then we have individual school safety plans. That can be found on the internet of every site.
Okay.
So every school site.
Okay, perfect. And I would, if you could just show me the link, I would like to see those just, because it seems like we're going to be embarking on a fairly long process.
Yep.
And there's going to be a lot of intersecting parts to this, so I think it would be good just to refamiliarize myself with the Safe Schools Act. The other pieces, where are we, if at all, working right now with the Center for the Study of the Prevention of Violence, which we've gone in and out of working with them from CU Boulder? Do we have, do we have a relationship with them right now? I know they've done some work on the social-emotional learning, but...
We met, I'm trying to remember the gentleman's name there at the university, we met with him probably a year ago, maybe even less than a year ago, and had started that conversation. We have not had that conversation in the last six months or so, so...
Okay. And I'm just going to throw out there that they are still doing best practices for dealing with violence prevention rather than reactive, and we may wish to partner with them, since it looks like we're going to be creating a lot of partnerships through this process, to consider how to get those best practices into play. And of course, they're local. So, and they've done some really great research. If you're not aware, before I joined the board, it was one of the reasons I joined the board, is that I saw a presentation about how to reduce gun violence through social-emotional learning programs. So this is still a group that's near and dear to me. The other pieces, I would also like, if possible, in this process, to look at a couple of our policies that I think are a little bit older, and I'll just give a couple of examples. And what's interesting is that if you look at the Safe School Act, it lists all the policies that we need to have in the CASB example for the policies, and there are just a ton of different policies, as I'm sure Kathleen is nodding her head. There's a policy around vandalism, there's a policy around drugs, and there's very specific language that I think we need to think about, because, for instance, in our vandalism policy, it says, "It shall be the policy of the Board of Education to prosecute to the fullest extent of the law persons to have found committed such acts of, you know, students." And it seems like we're sort of going into a more restorative path, so I just want to make sure that we have the right, it doesn't mean that we're condoning behavior that is detrimental to the safety of our community, but at the same time, we're looking for a more restorative approach. And some of the language we have in some of our older policies does seem a little bit, a little bit tough, if you ask me. So I would like to throw that in that as well. And then the other piece I saw reference when we talk about staff personnel, security, and safety, and this is policy GBGB, is this Colorado Criminal Code that also has some specific procedures that I think we need to understand as we create these processes, while we restructure this, the safety and security piece. So those are just some thoughts I had when I was just thinking about how we, you know, include student voice, consider the impacts to some other policies that are outside of the discipline policy where we spent most of our time, and making sure that all of our policies are in line with a restorative approach and a preventative approach to our community safety and well-being. So those are just some things I'd like to throw out there. Kathy?
That's a question I had, Tina, which is, I don't see anything in here that...
That's a question I had, Tina, which is, I don't see anything in here that talks about a focus on restorative justice as one of the ways to deal with actions, and I think it's naive to think, and I don't think anyone in this room thinks, that our students will not need to have some kind of disciplinary action taken against them, and I don't see a focus on training around restorative justice practices, so that the, and to Rob's point, so that there's some uniformity in the way we do restorative justice practices across the schools. We happen to have a district attorney who's, their program is, is renowned across the country for RJ, and so I've often wondered why we don't have more of a consistent approach, and why it's not mentioned in here as something that we should be looking at.
Thank you for raising that point. It's actually part of our recommendation number two, that we focus on more restorative justice approaches, and that we expand the existing restorative justice pilots that are being connected by the school district. The, the defenders, the Boulder County Program is one that we discussed as part of our SRO review process as well, and we tie that also to the need for a greater transparency and accountability in terms of collecting data invisibility reviewed by local SACS and DAX.
Kathy, I'd, I'd like to kind of pull a, a little bit of continuity between some observations that Tina had about some of our past practices and the transparency piece here with restorative justice. Dr. Anderson has, on several occasions, talked about trying to move, just generally, the metrics of the, of the district to more of leading indicators as opposed to rearward looking indicators. So a lot of our metrics that we have been examining, say, two or three years, the last two or three years at the DAC, have been backward looking, and they haven't been leading indicators. And the work that the committee did, and in particular, a couple of conversations I had with Jorge, framed it around, if we were to get some, some more effective leading indicators around discipline, discipline processes, that go more to that leading indicator piece, it really opens the door to opportunities for the restorative justice. In other words, the restorative justice comes in advance of, of, of a serious consequence. It, it's, it's preventative more so than, than, than retributive. And, and I think that was back to Tina's point about some of the language that's in the past, discipline processes reflect that. That was a culture of the time, and we see that in the metrics. So I think that, that one of the themes that's here is what we saw in terms of the data, the data that's being collected, how it gets collected, is really, in many ways, not untypical from some of the other data that we've been looking at to try and enhance. So I'll put that out there as well.
Thanks, Ralph.
Tina, could I add one thing, I think, to the restorative justice piece, Kathy?
That, that actually was one of our discussions within the group at one point. As a matter of fact, in the student interviews that we did, they talked about that, and having a, having a group of students as being a body who would actually have input to what that might be when someone does something wrong. And I think one of our members even asked, wow, so you would want to meet with senior leadership to talk about that? So this might be the next phase of the Equity Council in terms of, what do we do with the restorative practices involving our students as part of that? So I, when you mentioned that, it, it came to my mind, so I just wanted to make sure I bring that up.
That, that would be pretty cool, to have students get trained more in restorative justice practices and, and be included in that, that I think would be pretty cool. It sounds like you looked at a lot of information. Is it, is it stored someplace that we could have access to? For both? For, Rob, you were raising your hand.
All of our sessions were recorded, correct, along with all the data?
The actual data that, that was provided?
And the actual data.
Rob, you wanted?
I just want to, when I have a chance, I want to address Stacy's question on our campus safety officers.
Okay, I just have one more quick question. Did you at all have any conversations about the financial impact of any of your recommendations? Either group?
The question came up, and we utilized the kind of information that we were given, and it became clear that, given that the police departments provide the SROs to the district, that there was an opportunity to think differently about kind of a broader resource allocation across the Boulder, Boulder Valley community. But, and from there, the, the group said, you know what, we're just going to focus on what are recommendations, what we aspire to do absent budget concerns.
We, we had a similar discussion as part of our review, and recognize that it is, you know, being funded by police departments now, it's part of a larger conversation regarding how to involve the community, involve broader resources, in terms of how they're spent within the school district.
And we, DAC partly tabled that too, because we do engage in the budget conversation down the road as well, so we can take that piece into those conversations, but I think it's fair to rec, we're well aware of the current public school finance situation in our state and across our nation, and recognize that this will not, that this will be a cost to the district if it results in them being staff positions, because the SROs were fully funded by their respective law enforcement agencies. So that was an awareness that we had.
Right, and, and safety, I think we all agree, is one of our highest priorities, so we're just going to have to figure out what that looks like as we go forward.
Rob, addressing Stacy.
Yes, thank you. Tina, so job descriptions for campus safety officers, I will make sure the board gets that. I believe we've shared that with both committees. But in general, a campus safety, our, campus safety officers, eyes and ears for us out in the field, right? So they're deterrent, they're patrolling parking lots, corridors, et cetera, and then if they notice an unsafe condition, they are to report that unsafe condition to an administrator. So this is a classified position. It is a 10-month, 10-month position. So as you're reading through their job descriptions, stuff such as, monitor students during lunch hour inside and outside the building, monitor security cameras to oversee the safety and security of students, patrol parking lots for unidentified vehicles or unsafe situations. So and the list goes on, but this is really a, it's a classified position that reports to the principal. Last year, the year before, we centralized this position. Now they all report to Brendan Sullivan, our Director of Safety and Security. But it is, it's eyes and ears in the field. Just want to make sure that's clear.
Is that good, Stacy?
On the job description, does it say what the requirements are to be hired in that capacity?
So high school diploma or equivalent, minimum one-year experience in working with groups of elementary, middle, and high school students, minimum of 20, minimum age of 21. Then it has some technical skills, and then when they are hired, we require them to go through certain training.
Great, thanks, Rob.
Other, Lisa?
I have a question for Rob, actually. I think in the end, the City of Boulder decided to fund one SRO for the year, is that correct?
From my understanding, that it currently, and I believe that the City of Boulder's budget process is still ongoing, they haven't finally approved that budget. From my understanding, that, that staff had presented maintaining two of the seven SROs that were in their budget, that they had been funding for the school district, and I believe that the, that may be down to one at this point. I'm looking at Rob Price to give a little context.
We, we believe it's somewhere between one and two. We have not got a definite answer on how many school resource officers it will be, but we do know it'll be reduced.
So if we were going to continue the SRO program, do we have an estimate of what that would cost?
I can get that for you. I don't have an estimated cost tonight.
Okay, thanks. And then I'm wondering if either Rob, or Kathy, or anyone else might know, if we've looked into, you know, programs around grant funding for things, like our restorative justice work and some of these other things we're talking about, and what, what's out there?
I think we can look at grant funding. I think the, the challenge will be, based on the recommendations that we're reviewing, is that grants are one-time dollars, right? So a recurring grant, and, you know, depending upon, you know, as we determine the feasibility, start to dig into this issue, which I do think is an exciting opportunity for us to do better by our kids, that there could be grant for, grants for training, but in regards to the staffing and the recurring staffing, I, I just want to be clear with the board, I mean, you're looking at a seven, seven-figure type of, of an expense, as we're thinking about replacing what we weren't, we weren't budgeting for, right? So grants, I do think, can have a, a place in, in some of the training. We certainly have a grants department that can look at that and keeps their eyes and ears out for that. Be Valcheck does an excellent job, she works under, under Bill. But the, the, the large chunk of whatever, whatever we do moving forward is going to have to come from our budget.
Sorry, one more for funding. I know there's been some discussion around the idea that with dollars that had been spent on SROs no longer heading in that direction, that as the police department might see officers retire, the city might consider repurposing those dollars to other, other things that were closer matches to discussions we're having, to discussions folks at the city are having around alternative ways to, to deal with incidents. I'm wondering if, if we've had more conversations with anyone at the city around that, or if we plan to?
In speaking with the City of Boulder, it's my understanding that the, the positions that used to be in schools are going to be repurposed to, to a training department that will be part of, of the new chief's kind of police reform efforts, and that those funds would not be available to come back to the district in any way, shape, or form, at, at least with our initial conversations.
Okay. I, that's interesting. I was under the impression that there might be some room for retiring police officers to have those dollars from the city repurposed to other, other sources. Maybe it's worth having more conversations moving forward.
I think we're going to be having lots of more conversations.
To follow up on Lisa's question, I would think that maybe part of that training program, if we could have some influence, would be what, what interactions are going to be training their police officers to have with our youth? I would think that'd be part of it. One, one last question, we don't have an answer to it yet, but I just want to make sure that any path we go down doesn't get us into jeopardy of violating Claire Davis, that we aren't doing things that would show us to not be taking that responsibility seriously until that act is repealed someday, maybe.
I, I would say, as next step board members, I mean, we have a, a ton of action items to think about in regards to moving forward. I want to again thank, thank the Equity Council members, thank District Accountability, the Subcommittee. I think that folks took a lot of time and effort and were very, very thoughtful in recommendations. But as, as both Landon and Jorge shared with you all, they, they, they made these recommendations with, without the limiting factors that the district has to live within, right? Which is time and money. You know, the extent that the time is going to take to begin to unpack this and get this right in the midst of a pandemic, and the funding that we will have to find with, with no new money in sight, right? We're talking about a repurposing of priorities, which is something that we'll have to do. I, I think that what, what staff will need is the time to begin to start to figure these things out. I do think it's an exciting opportunity for our community. I think that we all, I know this board, and I know myself in particular, is, we're incredibly committed to making sure that we serve all of our kids, and that any disproportionality in regards to arrest or discipline is not okay, and we have to do everything in our power to fix those things. And I think that there's a consensus among the group's staff, you know, the path to get there and how we do that appropriately within the limiting factors, I think, is going to be the challenge that, that we are now faced with. So, but very excited about the feedback, the direction, the passion that was shown. I had a chance to sit in on first Equity Council Committee, and, and had a chance to sit in on the last District Accountability Committee when they made the recommendations. It's clear, I think our community has spoken very clearly and loudly to us in regards to what it is they hope to see, and so now it's our opportunity to, to figure out all of the details and work with our partners. And, and I will commend Brendan Sullivan, Rob Price. We have been working very closely with our local police agencies to build better relationships, and I'm counting on those relationships to help us figure out this next steps in how we can continue to work with them as we move forward.
Just have one quick question, Tina. So given what you just said, Rob, first I want to say thank you to everybody for all your hard work. It's, I know it was a huge time commitment, and the, the work product here is extraordinary, so I really appreciate it. But what are next steps on this issue going forward for these two groups? That's...
Yeah, I mean, so I gave this some thought, because we had hoped as a board to take some kind of action in August, or October, not in August. And I don't think we'll be able to draft a policy in a short time period at all, because we want to get the voice of different students, we want to get these committees established. So what I would like to do instead is, if possible, draft a resolution that, you know, something that says that we resolve to end the SRO program by August, or something like that, of 2021, gives the superintendent direction to figure out how to do it, and then also comes up with a budget recommendation for this year's budget process, because that is a significant part of this, and we'll need to do those trade-offs this year in order to make this happen next year and get the training done for whoever does the security. So I think that way we can, that is something that we could put on our agenda, because it's a resolution, it doesn't need to, Kathleen, correct me if I'm wrong, it would not need to go to study and then action, is that correct with the resolution? Or do I still need to put it on study? Okay. So that is, that is an option that the board can take, so I don't know how people feel about going in that direction, but that would, you know, affirm the work of the two committees, and then give staff the timeline, and also principals and teachers the timeline, to figure out the processes, because we're going to have to revamp a lot of things, as, as the Equity Council pointed out in particular. And also, we don't all have all the voices we need to make sure that these processes are sensitive to all the different groups, who are those especially who have the disproportionate behavior incidences. So we need to make sure that voice is there, we can't, you know, it's a really important part of this next stage of the process, so.
So maybe I'd just like some clarification on what that would look like. If we're talking about a resolution, is this something that, if we're voting, whatever the language is, is that going to be a, a watertight thing that we're committed to moving forward with, or is this something that's still going to require additional ongoing votes on what that removal process looks like, or?
Then I think the next vote would just be the budget item. So I think the budget item would be, so the resolution acts as policy, and it depends how we write the resolution. So for instance, when we write a resolution, sometimes it's just an affirmation of a belief that we do in a political environment. In this case, it would, we would say we're ending, and if you, did you read Denver's resolution? Yes. So they made some specific goals. So we would say our job is to come up with a timeline to remove the SRO program in August of 2021 would probably be the, the timeline. And then if we, and if we stumble on something, or if it has to be, Denver went with a 15% reduction in January, I think they took an 18-month timeline effectively, and, and they have a more robust campus security program, but they did a longer timeline, and I think it allowed for them to make some changes, depending on what happened, but I think it was pretty clear that that was where they were headed.
I think I'm definitely open to conversations about timeline and process, I just want to feel confident that whatever vote it is we're taking tomorrow on sort of the day that, or next week.
Next Tuesday, yes, got it.
Not, you got me. Whatever vote it is that we're taking is one that, you know, like you said, that isn't, that it's going to have real and meaningful impact, and that we're making strong commitments to, to our plans for the future, not just sort of offering lip service to the work of our committees.
No, this isn't, it's not an affirmation. So this is, this is, this is, this is direction for the superintendent, which is different. Kathleen, do I have all that right? Am I getting this right? All right.
Quick question. The SRO, SROs are primarily in middle school and high school correctly? Correct? And...
Don't look at me.
Correct.
The, the possibilities of middle school and high schools getting back into full-time session is like about, where are we at with that? I guess the reason I'm asking the question is because I don't know about extending it all the way to 2021, when in fact, we're not going to have SROs patrolling the schools, I don't believe, if students are not there. Why can't we say something around ending SROs? And then the other language.
I personally think that the principals, teachers, and staff need to understand how this is going to work, and how we're going to work with our police officers before we change everything. That would be my personal belief, because I feel like we've, we have enough disrupting our system right now, that they'll just need a little time to think about this, and it's probably, I, I mean, my guess is today, right now, this was, these are a pretty tough couple of weeks, because we just brought three, four, five, six, and nine, and we're bringing back 10, 11, 12, seven, and eight next Tuesday. I don't think it's the time to do an abrupt anything in this district, that's my belief. You know, we could, but I don't think it would give people the space they need to think about how this change looks, and also how to incorporate the voices of the people who are most affected.
I also think we're looking at an entirely new way to think about safety and security, and we can't do that overnight. So I don't think you can take one step without the other. and we can't do that overnight. So I don't think you can take one step without the other.
Well, you know, the, both committees made a recommendation to end SROs. They didn't put a timeline to it, at least I don't remember, at least from the Equity Council. And I don't know whether DAC put a timeline to it. But I think I'd like to hear from, from DAC and from the Equity Council in terms of the delay as it relates to the SROs and the assignment we gave both the DAC and the SROs to look at whether we should end the SROs or not.
So, so Richard, we've had a couple of dialogues on this, and I in particular had a lengthy one with Jorge one day. And it fit into the context of this. The movement from the culture and the structure that we currently have, that we've defined to be inadequate, to a restorative process that's effective, is, is one that should be thoughtful and, and, and take time to go through. Because one of the things that we picked up right away was the process of dialogue that the DAC went through, and the voices that came and were heard and spoke were extraordinarily important. And having the time to move through that, hear those voices, internalize those thoughts, and then move in, in, in that fashion to a more restorative structure is, is, is worthy of time and thought. Because we would tell you, we don't have all the pieces that we could tell you how to put this together yet. We do recognize it's complex and that it really involves a lot of moving parts.
And I would add, there's a lot of discussion around encourage, having the district commit to a firm deadline, and in appreciation that we understand that there is a lot going on right now with trying to get students back in school and online learning and all of that, that, that kind of taking center stage right now. So we're, we're trying to be mindful of district capacity and as Ralph had said, like the thoughtfulness that's required to do this right. But the DAC did want the board to establish a deadline, and again, way for accountability to be addressed. So having a firm deadline that fits within the context of the, the ability of, of the school district and the desires of the board, so we can continue to check in on and make sure that we're working toward that deadline and those goals.
I think it was, we made it very clear during the Equity Council conversation that the recommendation would be brought to the board and the superintendent, and then the staff and the board and the superintendent would deliberate around timeline and next steps. And so if there's a direction from the board and superintendent for us to have a deeper conversation around timeline, we'd be happy to bring that back. But we were very clear that this wasn't a fiat recommendation, that, you know, this was something that would have to be considered and thought through in terms of what the implementation considerations would be.
Okay. So I, I recognize that this is a short timeline before next week, but I think I would feel really good if what we saw was a recommendation that had maybe a no later than date, coupled with some real clarity around who would be involved in the decision-making process and some specific milestones in that timeline, so we could track and sort of make sure that we're staying on track with the progress we're expecting tonight.
I, I would just say again, each, both District Accountability Committee and, and the Equity Council made recommendations that I think are connected. Neither of them made a recommendation just to remove. Like it's just to remove and replace with. And until, unless I'm, I'm reading the, the recommendations incorrectly, that, you know, until you're ready to replace with, right, the idea of removing, I mean, there's, you know, those are connected as, as part of the conversation and what was approved. Instead of this, we want this, as opposed to, we don't want this. And then, you know, coming along. And I just think about, you know, the budget implications right now, you know, the way that our budgeting process works is all of our money's budgeted, right, the budget that you'd approved. We'd have to divert dollars away from something else to do something like soon. And, and to the extent we could even pull that off amidst the pandemic and, and trying to focus all of our efforts and energies on, on getting students back into school and making sure that we're maintaining the safety, I just question our ability to do that well.
Well, can I, I agree, Rob. I didn't read these in isolation. I read them together, the recommendations, so.
I guess my, my question, Rob, is if we're only expecting to have one, possibly two SROs funded by the city this year, and we're saying that the budget is set, and we're saying that we can't have no SROs, and we can't not have another solution in place, what are we doing in Boulder?
So I would say that, you know, to the extent that the budget is or isn't finalized, I think now that we've heard the recommendations, which, you know, Equity Council finalized those yesterday evening, that we're going to have to begin to start to engage in conversations with, with city of Boulder and with, and with our security staff on what, what it is that we do next, right? And to the extent that, that we're going to have to work through that and figure that out, what are the, what are the factors? A, we're in school one day a week in our high schools with 25% of our students, right? I think that that creates a different dynamic, that we have a pandemic that, as much as I'd love to tell you, Richard, we're going to come back, you know, I, we just don't know what's going to happen. So I think that there's a lot of unknowns that we're going to have to work through. Like I do not have a plan for you today on what we're going to do to replace those positions or how we're going to, how we're going to move forward. We're going to need a little bit of time to figure that out.
Can you read your recommendation, your first recommendation, and then Jorge, can you read your recommendation again, please? Landon first, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's all good. Thank you, Member Garcia. Recommendation one is to end the current SRO partnership and remove SROs from all school buildings.
Jorge?
The DAC recommends the district end the existing SRO program and remove SROs from all district schools. The district should continue to work with community partners, including local law enforcement, to devise community-supported school safety plans as mandated by state law.
Now, couldn't a resolution be made where you do say that you're going to remove the SROs, but then on the whereas, then you put all the other stuff on there that would at least give time for the principals and everybody else to?
Yeah. That's what, so the resolution will say that we're ending the SRO program, but it won't be this week. There's going to be some other pieces that happen so that we know what's going to, so that our schools and our leaders can understand how they're going to do security. Our safe school plans have to be rewritten.
I understand that, Tina, but I heard you say remove the SROs in 2021 of August.
Well, I think it's to what Lisa said, no later than August 2021. So it's just that there's a time, there's a time piece to it. Lisa?
I do hear from, I think some of the folks in the Equity Committee in particular, and some of the folks who are staffing our schools, that, that that is important, that making sure we're taking the right steps in the way we move forward and that they're feeling confident in how we're doing it is important, and I hear that. I guess I would also just point out that I think Richard and I are just a little nervous about, clearly about the, you know, the strength of this language. And that as we move into next week, maybe thinking about really developing a document that makes everybody feel comfortable with what it's saying would be, would be a good place to start next week to make sure that everyone's feeling good about what's being communicated.
Yeah. And, and so I'll draft it with Kathleen, and it can be amended at the meeting as well. And we can also take two meetings to do it, which might be a good idea, too. It doesn't have to be October. We can go into November. It's not a, you know, Kathleen?
Well, and I just want to say, Richard and Lisa, Rob made a commitment to get us this recommendation during a pandemic, during everything he's been doing and everything, and he met that commitment. So I have no reason to doubt that we will continue to move forward in the face of everything else we're dealing with, but we can't do it despite everything that we're dealing with. So we just have to be very mindful, I think, of everything that's on staff's plate and everything that we're trying to deal with, and still keep our, our understanding. But I don't think it was really fair, Richard, to just read one recommendation when there were six from the Equity Council and three from the DAC. And I don't think they were meant to be issued separately. I think they were meant to be issued together.
Thank you, Kathleen. I understand that. But I want to make sure that you understand that I know the commitment that the superintendent made, and I appreciate it. And I'm not saying that he's not going to live up to his commitments. I clearly understand that Rob has been committed to equity as, as soon as he got into the school district.
Okay. Did you have anything, another thing to say?
Maybe. I'll just agree that I don't think there's any lack of confidence in leadership. There's just a, a feeling of, I think anytime we're talking about something and we're talking about a resolution and nobody's seen it, I think it's, it's understandable that there's some fears about exactly where we're going to end up. So I guess at least from my part, I'm just trying to express that I think that strength of language and that clarity of intention, you know, would be, well, you know, is important. But that it's certainly not anything to say that we don't have a great deal of confidence in Rob and in where he's taken us so far and where we're going next.
Stacy, Kathy, or, no? All right. So if it's okay with everyone, we'll try to get a resolution for next Tuesday. If we need more time, we'll go into November, but I think our, our goal was to actually try to do something in October. And then, and we can always look at it one meeting, and we can say, no, we're not going to do it this meeting, we need more time, we're going to do it the next meeting. We can do that with resolutions. We have a lot more flexibility than policy, even though it acts as temporary policy. All right?
Tina, can I say one last thing?
Yes.
City, we've made a lot of comments about the city of Boulder pulling SROs from our schools. We have not been officially notified of that. So that was a really brief conversation. I just want to make sure that's clear in case this gets out. Nobody from the city has put that in writing.
But I do believe that they, they presented their preliminary budget, and it was included in their preliminary budget.
My understanding, that just hasn't been approved yet.
Rob, can I ask a question? We haven't asked them either. Like, like in other jurisdictions, they pay half or they pay some share. We have not had that conversation, so we don't know what their bottom line is. Is that fair? We, do we? I mean, it's a preliminary budget. I know we're all under budget crunches. I'm just saying, we don't know what they're going to say when we come back with what we are hoping to have as a partnership with them.
I, I think that's the next level of conversation. I think that, you know, to the extent that the board will pass a resolution that gives staff clear guidance and direction is going to be very helpful, is give us the opportunity to then go back and engage, not just city of Boulder, just so everybody's clear, we have six agencies, right? As we think about intergovernmental agreements, we'll have six agencies that we're working. Those are six separate agreements with six different municipalities, six different mayors. Like, so there's going to be a lot of work, right? I do think, I am confident in the relationship that we've established and built, and look to build upon that as we work through this. But yeah, so, so maybe, you know, we'll have to just see how that goes.
So, all right. Any other comments, or we could adjourn 15 minutes early? Everyone okay with that? All right. Well, thanks again to DAC and to the Equity Council. It was great to have you here, and we just appreciate all your work.
Thank you all.
Good night, everyone.